Good morning. Today is Tuesday, November the 10th, and I call to order the Management and Internal Services Committee meeting. Let's begin with our invocation, dear Lord. Thank you so much for this day, and thank you for the blessings we have, including the right to assemble and to govern ourselves. Help us today as we make decisions that affect our neighbors and the citizens of the county. Some of these decisions are not easy, but please guide us and be sure our actions are based on truth and in fairness. In your name we pray, amen. Please join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, Republic, nation, justice for all.
Thank you. We have a quorum this morning, and we will move right into the items on our agenda. Can we please first have an approval of the minutes of the last meeting?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
So moved. We have any additions to the agenda?
Not to my knowledge, Madam Chair.
Very good. Thank you very much. Moving on, I don't see any presentations at this time, nor anything for the consent agenda. Moving right on into debate. Mr. Johnson, do you have an appointment for us?
The first item for your consideration is appointment to the Tax Assessors Board. As you all know, Don Skinner will not be able to serve his term on the Tax Assessors Board as he has been elected to the District Two Commission seat as of January 1st, 2021. So the chairman is asked to appoint George Bratcher to fill that unexpired term. It will expire December 31st of 2022. Staff recommends the approval of appointing the chairman's pick, George Bratcher, to the Tax Assessors Board with the term expiring December 31st, 2022.
Does his recommendation count as the motion, or are we going through the?
Yeah, you would have to make a motion.
Motion.
But you could put it anywhere you like. But yes.
I make a motion that we move it. Second.
All right, moved to consent. Internal Services.
Yes, the first item I have for you is an independent contractor agreement with juvenile court. They recently added William Fleming as one of their associate judges. He had been working there, Public Defense Services, he and Kelly Kitchens. He was being paid $35,000 a year, she was being paid $12,000 a year, for a total of $47,000. Now they would like to add Jack Long as a public defender.
Junior or senior?
It says Jack RB Long.
Junior.
But they would handle the services equally, both being paid at $22,000 a year, so it will be a total of $44,000, slight savings. So staff recommends approving the independent contractor agreements for these two individuals. These will actually run from October 1st through June 30th of 2021.
Moved to consent.
So moved.
The next item is a contract renewal with our magistrate court for misdemeanor probation services. These are being provided by CSRA probation services. The fees are 100% paid by the offender, so there is no cost to the county, and this is renewal number four for this agreement.
Second.
Next.
The next item is the purchase of a cabin chassis for one of our fire rescue vehicles. It's shop number 3535, Rescue 10. I'm actually gonna ask our fleet manager, Nick Hayes, to come up and explain this one, and Chief Wallens also here if you have questions. This is one that just seems to stay in the shop and has more downtime than it's actually outrunning, and Mr. Hayes, you can explain it, please.
Morning.
Morning.
I made the recommendation to replace this unit prior to budgeting for this unit. Because we've run into a real problem. Spent more than 50% of the lifetime maintenance cost on this truck in less than two and a month. Seen it out of the shop more than 30 days this year already. Currently, this vehicle is running around with parts that were purchased used off of eBay. So the part supply has kind of dried up. When I contacted Ford Engineering, their recommendation was to get rid of the truck.
Hmm, nice of them.
They really don't have a fix for this model truck and the problems that we've seen. So when we saw the part supply dry up, I had to make the recommendation, purchase the cabin chassis, a little over $50,000. We're gonna reuse the body that is on it. The fire department is happy with the body that they have on there. The body is in good condition.
Purchase price include the car?
We're gonna swap it in-house. We estimate, we estimate less than $5,000 in additional, as far as switching the body over. We were able to find a truck that actually the color matched. This truck is on the lot, they're holding it for us. Won't have to paint it or anything like that. Body over.
What does this do to you? Mention that before.
It's not a budgeted item, but we are going to pay for it out of our fire services fund, which is partially funded with insurance premium tax fund, so we will take the funds from there if we need to.
And do we know what, if we replaced this truck completely and didn't use the old stuff, what would the cost of that new rescue truck be? I know we've looked at some.
We would estimate somewhere around $250,000.
If we just replaced the whole thing, it'd be $250,000. But if we replace this, we're gonna be able to get the entire life out of it again, because it's gonna be a new cab and chassis, correct?
We feel good about the body that's on it. We've inspected that body, because that was one of my concerns. Measured, we went and looked at frames, we wanted to verify that if we did this, it was pretty over. We feel really good about the, about not having to buy another rescue truck.
What about the disposal of the old chassis?
We'll put it on Gov. deals. Somebody will want the parts off of it. They sell it piece by piece on eBay.
And as part of this approval, we would like the authorization to issue a letter of intent to the vendor, so that they will know that they will hold it until the commission can meet.
Moved to consent.
Second.
So moved.
That need to be in the motion, better than 10 or something?
I think we're fine with that. I think I borrowed the, we actually authorized it, so I appreciate you authorizing it to back me up. This is one of those things, we didn't want to let it get away from us, but I think we're okay, Mr. Vice Chair. I think we're good.
Anything else, Leanne?
No.
That's it. Blanchard?
The first item I have for your consideration is a broadband non-disclosure agreement, or an NDA. In our industry, we have a lot of negotiations that we begin with a company, and then we may or may not bring that to fruition on the back end. What we've seen over the last couple of years is our contracts have become more complex. There's different pieces, there's co-location in our data center or in our POP. We've got dark fiber, we've got various agreements like the one we've signed with WC Tel not too long ago. So there's a lot of diversity in there, and in that industry, you have people that change hands a lot, and what we're looking for here is kind of the ability to protect what we've negotiated for with these different companies. This is something that's fairly common. In fact, I've got another agreement that's on my desk right now, I'll probably bring it to you in December, that has where the vendor wants us to sign a non-disclosure agreement. Now, of course, these are subject to Georgia Open Records Act under certain conditions, but we wanted to go ahead, and since we do have this more diverse customer base than we used to have, get this out there so that we're protected from behind-the-scenes talking, where we're not involved with, well, I got this deal from Columbia County or that Columbia County, when the conditions are not exactly 100% equal. So the NDA itself is going to be added to our standard contract that we do with all of our customers. Now procedurally, what we'd like to do is for the broadband manager, Harold Sparrow, to be empowered to push this across the table to the people he's negotiating with and have them sign it. I will know in advance that he's going to do that. If we go to, if we take this contract to the commission, then that will be attached. So you'll see that that NDA is there, and you'll have that opportunity to improvement. If it doesn't go to commission, then what we're asking is that there's a provision there for it to stay for three years, that they won't talk about the agreement that they were working on before they decided to stop.
Are our offerings pretty much standard? Body, a certain offering, this level is a little bit better, or how does that, for the companies that are talking to us?
I hate to say it depends, but it does depend. In some areas, we've got fiber that's at higher in demand, and they might want 12 strands of fiber, or 44 strands of fiber. You may have another area where there's low demand, and so it's in our best interest in that case to go ahead and get somebody using it. And we may, we have some leeway that we can do to negotiate that if you're also going to put equipment in the POP, then we've got a guaranteed income stream from there. So each one of these negotiations is a little bit different.
What happens is, is we do it when it's in low demand, and we negotiate a price, and all of a sudden, because they're on it, now it becomes in high demand, so the guy behind them is gonna pay a higher price. We're not gonna give them the same price we gave the person when it was low demand. That's raising this fluctuates so much. And I believe just to add one thing to what Michael's saying, I believe Mr. Driver's been through this agreement, worked on this non-disclosure. I think it'll benefit us going forward.
How do you enforce this? I mean, obviously, it means you don't call your competition or another county or whatever and say, "Ha ha, look what I got," but if it's all open records anyway, somebody, they just have to dig for it.
No, they have to dig for it. That's exactly right. What we want to prevent is casual conversations where people don't have all the facts.
And how do you enforce that? I mean, if somebody's at a Christmas party and they're just chatting about it, and how do you, it really?
Realistically speaking, we want there to be notice out there that we have this, and they're not supposed to do it if they do talk about it, truthfully.
We could, we could seek injunctive relief. I mean, if we decided we wanted to seek injunctive relief, we could have Chris sue him if we wanted to do that, but.
It was just best practices, really.
It's best practices in the industry, and if.
Happy to.
Just saying.
And going forward, we also want to make sure that we can negotiate with everybody on an equal footing. If they come in with knowledge that may have, it's mistaken that, oh, you can get this for, you know, $2 a mile from Columbia County, it puts us at a disadvantage. So as long as everybody plays by the rules, this works the way it's supposed to. If it doesn't, yes, we have, we can.
You have something else, Chris? Right.
Right.
Setting your expectations for them not using their deals with us as advertisement for, okay.
Moved to consent.
Second.
So moved. Agreement with Pictometry International for digital orthophotography. Those are big words, Ms. Blanchard. What do we have here?
They are big words, but I will, I will try and make everything plain. Orthophotography is basically an aerial photo that has coordinates attached to it. Anything that you see when you look at Google Earth, or Google Maps, or if you look at our maps online, those are digital orthophotos. It's digital because it's been computerized, it's ortho because it has coordinates assigned to it. So that's why they overlay with our parcels, our roads, railroads, and everything like that. They've been shaped to the earth's surface, so that's the ortho part, that's all that really means. What this agreement is gonna do is it provides a, another word, oblique orthophotography. Now, what we've historically done for the, actually every single one of our overflights that we've done since 2005, I believe, is we've just done vertical orthos. So it's looking straight down on whatever structures we have. What obliques do is they take a photograph, when the pass through with the aircraft, it's taking a picture forward, left, right, and backward, and straight down. So what we're really doing is, if you can imagine that you're flying by a house, by the time you've completed all your passes, you've taken a picture of every side of that house, or every side of that school, or industrial building, or even a patch of woods, whatever it is. So the advantage to that is that you have, it has better public safety uses, because if, got this overlaid on, if it's part of our maps online, or if we go to the website, if you're at a fire incident or a police incident, you can see the entrances to the building, see things about the building that you wouldn't normally see if you were just looking at an aerial photo. So it's gonna help all of our public safety with their, their incident planning. From the Tax Assessor's Office perspective, there's not, we're not purchasing this product in year one, but there is a Change Finder product that they offer that will compare from your newest flight to your previous flights, changes that have taken place in that interim time period. So technically, that's, that can be a revenue generator, because you want to overlay that with all of your building permits and see, well, oh, here's a new however many square-foot house or structure, and we don't see a permit for it. It does give you some enforcement capabilities. From an engineering perspective or a planning perspective, it gives you the, you can see the lay of the land, so you know that if we're looking at this, we've got slope to deal with, it's not just flat, and that's something you don't get from just plain orthos.
Is this replacing something in the spend, or is this just a totally add-on?
Sorry, it was left hard.
Is this an add-on expense, or is it replacing something that we're already using?
It will replace the digital orthos that we currently have. We've done digital orthos every other year since 2005. So this will be, we'll still have those. We paid for those, those are ours forever, and if you look at the maps online, you can look at how things have progressed. Simply a different approach to the same product, it gives us more capability.
We budgeted for the upgrade. We budgeted for the upgrade, and in our budget discussions this past year, we budgeted for the upgrade to make it, a lot of counties, well, not a lot of counties, progressive counties are moving towards this product, so we felt like we would be behind if we didn't, so we budgeted for the upgrade.
So does some of the original costs go away?
That was where I was headed.
No, we, it just adds. We're purchasing this product, but we're not purchasing the aerial that we did last time. We're just replacing that old product with this product.
I can't remember, do you remember what the difference was?
So the answer to your question is yes. We just say, hey, we were using this, we're getting rid of this, and we're adding this.
Right.
That's right.
Wondering how much the difference was.
This is definitely an upgraded, more capable product.
And this will be, this will be for anybody that, I S, I mean, anybody to walk around, is it just for our use as a county, or is it, is it, body will be able to scan?
We get to make that determination. As a county, we, I mean, we would upload it to GIS unless this board said, "We don't want to do that." But a lot of places are doing that. You can go to Google Earth now and do the same exact thing. And you can go to, you can go to our GIS and look at something, and then, and see a straight down shot, and go to Google Earth and do a 360 of the same thing.
Can't we just link to them?
This is higher accuracy, and that's the reason why that we have the expense instead of just going to Google Earth, is that this gives us a higher degree of accuracy. We can, we can map with these.
Right.
And you can't really do that with Google Earth.
That's correct.
In terms of the accuracy and also the resolution, we'll be able to zoom in, and I think we've got, Larry, correct me if I'm wrong, four-inch tiles is what we'll have, three-inch tiles, even better. We'll have three-inch tiles, three-inch resolution, which is not what you get. Richmond County, and McDuffie, and Lincoln, so we are a little bit behind the curve. This also has a benefit of interfacing with our new IAS World software that the Tax Assessors and Tax Commissioners Office is using. So it's built into that, and it'll give them additional capabilities when they're doing assessments.
Moved to consent.
Second. So they can, the assessor's office can basically do the investigation before they ever leave the office, is that?
A lot of cases.
Sir, in a lot of cases, and obviously, if there's a lot of leaves on the trees when the flight is done, most flights are done in winter time. In fact, we would be on the schedule for, I think, believe, February or March to get this done. And most of Columbia County, where it's a subdivision, you're gonna be able to see all the way around the house. If it's heavily wooded area, the very least, this would give someone the ability to do pre-planning before they go out there.
Neighbors can see.
Don't do it till spring.
Wait till March.
Wow. That's a lot of information out there for our neighbors to see.
That is.
Well, we have a motion, consent, so moved. Anything else, Mr.? Thank you. I don't see any other items that have been, been added. Do we have any legal matters? Thank you. Staff reports.
First item, just for your information, is our personnel savings. We discussed this a little bit in our planning advance, but you can see that our total savings to date are $414,910.
And Internal Services, year-to-date budget report.
Yes, the first report is the year-to-date budget report for the month ended October 31st. We should be performing around 33% of the budget at this time. As usual, I have listed several of the major funds for your review, and everyone is operating well within their budgets at this time. The next item is the sales tax update. We have received revenues for the month of September that was almost $2.3 million, and our current annualized percentage increase is 19.76%.
And the investment report?
Yes, the final report is the investment report for your review.
In this investment report, does it show just how we're earning money?
That's what I thought it was.
Well, it shows the current.
Not the balance, but.
Rates according.
So let's just say, for example, at the end of the 19, we had X dollars, and just the percent gain that we're earning in interest. I see balances, but do we have any way to measure how they're performing?
We do during, at the end of the year with our audit report, we, we do the interest income as well as the net appreciation or depreciation in our investments. So that is something I could get.
If you could just report on that, that'd be great.
Okay.
Interesting to see.
I can do that.
Thank you.
And you know, I believe we've mentioned this in the past, but we have historically moved money around when we've been given a better opportunity or a better rate. A lot of times, a lot of counties park the majority of their money in the Georgia One Fund. But for us, we felt like, you know, if we could do a money market at a local bank, it would give us much better returns, and that's been the case. Mr. Preach has done a real good job of looking at those and watching those, and we move that around. I mean, not, not often, but when, every time, like, for example, when a CD matures, we don't automatically reinvest it. When a CD matures, we shop the market and then reinvest it.
Perfect.
Great interest rates on here, I don't think.
Oh, yeah.
Good job.
We fight hard.
Except for the Georgia Fund. Is the Georgia Fund, that's a, that's a variable rate or something?
It is, and it's extremely low right now, of course, with rates being what they are. But that is just, it's a pooled fund, I guess you could call it, that a lot of, that governments use to park money when they need to.
But it's just.
And I forget what it's based on, but it is a variable rate based on some index.
It's volatile, too. I mean, it could go to nothing.
Yes.
Some of these rates are fantastic. Great job shopping.
I'll step back on the tax for just a second. When do you think we'll complete one and get into tier two? And do you, how far do you think we're going to tier two? I don't know that I've ever seen anyone really made it to tier two.
Right, well, we, historically, we have made it to tier two in some splosts. We have this discussion every time, we're ahead of schedule. It looks like sometime around the first of the year, after, a little after the first of the year, we're gonna get.
Got two, 40 years left on it, it looks like.
Right. That's right. If these numbers stay as strong as they are right now, it'll be sometime after the first of the year. You, we, the way we did this last splosh, because we pushed so much up front, and we bonded those projects, and then we had the big project, the $30 million for the hospital, tier-one project, we didn't have a ton of tier-two projects. So there are a few, but it looks like we may get pretty deep into tier-two, be able to complete some of those projects.
Any none? Any commissioner comment, public comment? All right, I have no executive session items, so adjourn.
Couple, couple of minutes, get us there. Called to order the Public Works and Engineering Services Committee, November the 10th. Pledge, we do have a full quorum. Approval, if y'all are satisfied with the previous meeting minutes. Mr. Johnson, is agenda?
Not to my knowledge. Mr. Chairman, I believe you're good to go.
I think we'll have a little freak-like presentation later in the, the consent agenda. We'll move right down to the debate. Doctor?
Thank you, sir. The first one we have is a professional service contract with Chris Booker and Associates. This will be for the design of the first floor with the site changes to the Justice Center annex. Be a $70,000 contract. Staffs recommend approval.
How much do we already pay him for the, oh, no, this is for the annex, they're not the effect.
Correct.
Okay.
We have not paid, and he's done a lot of work so far for us, given his concepts, and we haven't paid him a dime. He's done everything pro bono to this point.
Okay, thank you. Motion?
Second.
So moved.
Next one I have for you is an engineering proposal from Zell Engineering. This is to install a new water line from the Gibbs Road area down to the Owens Road area. Currently, we do have a line there, it's a, it's a small.
That's, that's all right.
Yes, sir. It's gonna be fun, there's gonna be a lot of snaking around to do to get this line in, but it'll upgrade to a 12-inch line from the Gibbs area to Evans Locks area, then we'll go to a 16-inch line from there down to the Owens Road Target Shopping area. This will give us a lot more flow. The pressure's there, we would want more flow, there's been a lot of growth in this area. Line that's out there now was put in early on when this system was expanded, so it's been there for a while. Give us a good connectivity with our 500 elevation system, it'll give us backup to flow, additional flows, both directions. It'll give us backup to flow, additional flows, both directions. We can move water. Anything else, Mark, that needs to be said?
Okay, and that'll be on the side of Washington.
Not so sure where it'll be.
Let take him to. Tell him what take him to get the design finished.
In the timeline on the doing the project, you think they. Not designed once you start construction. That's a pretty big project in traffic, a lot of traffic disruption, or. Right.
A lot of property acquisition, or this will go.
Mark, come on, come on up for me, please, because.
Sorry.
Board and all this, we're not hearing anything you're saying, so if you'll come up, that'd be better.
So so will it kind of follow where our utilities already are? Will have property acquisitions?
There will be some if we have to maneuver around through the the backside of the theater area. I'm not sure. I haven't seen, you know, the actual layout of that concept yet. Just had some conversation. But most of it will be in right-of-way existing. There might be some easement acquisition, depending upon, once they find out existing infrastructure and where it's all at, if we have to shift, you know, from where we might think we can go in a in a right-of-way. This is a fairly large line, the twelve is, and then the sixteen, of course, will be enlarged, so there might be some due to having to shift from existing infrastructure. It's gonna be a huge connector for that five-hundred system to backfeed coming back from the Mullins area back, and then, of course, from the Gibbs Road area. So if you have failure on one side or the other, you've got redundancy. You've got huge volume coming from a twenty-four through a sixteen back into this ingested area here. If you lose anything on that side, the twelve is sufficient, you know, to carry your needs, but the redundancy, backfeed, and volume are definitely needed for today and for tomorrow. Connector, huge shot in the arm for the the five-hundred system in this area.
I think the only pop thing that pops in my mind is when you talk about the, I think by the Performing Arts Center, is that we don't put infrastructure and do all this build-out, you can go rip it up to run a water line.
Well, you know, we've got, I think.
That sounds very inefficient. Is that gonna happen?
As far as having to tear anything up for.
Performing Arts, I'm not following, I didn't follow your.
Where? I thought you said it was gonna go potentially by the. Movie theater, okay, I misunderstood, sorry.
The movie theater over in the Bel Air Road.
Yeah.
Washington Road area.
That's why I was confused.
Right, if we can't, if we have trouble getting through that intersection, there might be some snaking like Matt was talking about. We might have to come around a different area due to existing infrastructure that might be in the way to.
But it won't snake all the way over here.
No.
It's different. We, the, Mark was mentioning earlier the line that just was installed from Owens Road down to Flowing Wells. When we got to Flowing Wells, instead of staying in the right-of-way, they actually jumped over to the parking lot of the old Portman Music, the old theater. Lot easier to go through that parking lot than it was to try to go up Flowing Wells Road around all the existing utilities.
Exactly, and we've made another maneuver on the backside of that project due to infrastructure and making a shift in the middle of the contract because it became a better pathway towards the end of that of that run. So those kind of things can happen still in this, but that's one of the things I was talking about a little while ago was trying to understand with the design locates and maybe taking an extra step further to potentially miss those things if we can understand where they are up front. Because you don't always get everything right when you're trying to conceptually plan this out, you know, and get everybody involved that has infrastructure in the ground.
That was gonna take care of that on the front end.
So the the problem with that design locates, you mentioned, you know, we call eight-one-one before you dig. Also call eight-one-one and say, I'm designing, show me where your stuff is. They do not respond to those requests. Very hard to get them out of there. And AT&T might have five lines in the right-of-way, side by side. If we don't know that up front, it it costs us money during construction, so spend the money up front. Evaluate, use ground penetrating radar, pothole, do a lot of work up front, makes your construction a lot easier.
That was part of my question, because I've heard a lot about all of the the nightmare on the other side of Washington right across from my car wash right there. How that site would be so tough to develop because of.
Money to go through your parking lot, that'd be probably the better place.
We'd make sure.
Move to consent. Here's parking lot.
But but anyway, so huge, and I know it'll all be addressed, but I was just.
Right.
That was my question over here, from what I've heard in the past, what's there and.
Right.
How big a problem it's gonna be for whoever does it. Looks like we're gonna be the.
Yes, sir. There's a lot of infrastructure that was there that as that area grew, came under the road to some degree, you know, on the edge and in the Washington Road section near the Walmart area.
Right.
And, you know, those are those are the things that happen as as you grow. Sometimes infrastructure stays where it was originally installed, and sometimes you have to move it later. Growth, that's kind of where we're at.
We're here today to talk about the, specifically the engineering proposal, but, and I won't get too far away from that, but the big picture, the project itself is a four-million-dollar budget.
Right.
And what what, we don't know when that would, that would obviously be well after we done and all that. So we're talking about a couple of years?
I wouldn't think a couple of years. I would think maybe, you know.
The money, the budget for that is.
Yes.
Right.
We're creating a whole deal with this motion.
Right, basically earmarking that money, setting it aside right now. Here's where it's going.
And we we give that, we give you that report, that extension renewal project. So this project would just be added to that list, and that amount of money would be earmarked on that list, and we update that as money is added to that fund, and as they spend money doing projects out of that fund, Mark updates that for us every month.
Can you think four million on?
We certainly hope so.
I've already moved to consent.
Second?
Second.
So move. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Mark.
Dial, I think you're up.
Good morning. The first item I have for you is the bid for Hereford Farm Road Blanchard Road Improvement. We advertised this project for construction on the thirtieth. Opened the bids on November third. Four bidders, budgeted amount, our internal budget was about four hundred eighty-five thousand. Construction came in at four hundred and thirty-five thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars. Staffs recommending, recommending approval.
Hundred and something days for this project.
Two hundred and twenty-seven days is what Reeves proposed, which is about seven and a half months.
Part date was.
Probably, once the commission approves it, probably a month after approval, time to get the bonds in and get the contract signed. But we'd probably, I'd say January first, first of the year.
Second.
I'll move.
Second item I have for you is for an amendment number three with Jacobs Engineering for Furious Ferry Road Widening. They're well into the design phase on this. Done several out-of-scope assignments at our request. The government amount is for a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, a hundred and thirty thousand five hundred dollars. Forty thousand dollars of that is what we asked them to apply for the construction phase of the project so they could be on, basically buy construction support through the construction duration. The ninety thousand five hundred dollars is what we negotiated them down to for the out-of-scope work that they done for us. That would include several utility conflicts that were discovered during the project. They had to do redesigns around. Also, from my understanding, this was before me, but I think, I don't want to speak on behalf of Water Utility, but I think Water Utility was gonna provide the design for some of the utilities and basically give that to Jacobs, and Jacobs popped that into the design. However, we had some staff changes with Water Utility, which that. Had to ask Jacobs to do that. And then also, we noted, we we were able to identify some right-of-way issues where we could redesign, make redesigns, save on the right-of-way phase, save substantially. Steve X identified at least four right-of-way revisions, saved over a hundred thousand dollars each. Construction phases of the project, so I recommend the approval.
Out of scope, that's in change order, basically.
Correct. Weren't originally scoped.
That those, those items are actually saving us.
I would go out, and I would say that those changes saved us a half a million dollars.
Is it unforeseen conditions, I think? Is that what I'm understanding?
They're just, had a design, and then we were able to get, kind of think outside the box, move things around, go with a different idea, ask them to redesign things for us, and it it cut the money way down.
I'll give you one example. We, since I've been on, we relocated a water line so that we wouldn't have to go through two or three parcels, which saved us on that right-of-way take. So we were able to save over a hundred thousand dollars on relocating a water line from the original design.
Devil's advocate, when that redesign happened, was that something that should have been redesigned? Or is just, hey, now we're out here? Why, if it's such a great idea, why not in the first go-around?
I mean, I'd say hindsight's twenty-twenty, obviously. A lot of parcels, we gave them direction from what I understand, and they designed to our direction. And as we worked through the final design, we were working through right-of-way negotiations, had some troubled parcels, to say it nicely, and we'll try to negotiate with them for, I think Steve worked with one property owner, trying to work with them for over a year. Not getting anywhere with them, so he said, hey, let's move this water line, just get it out of off their property, and we'll make it work.
Yeah, we don't want to have a bunch of bins and turns in our water lines. We try to keep them nice and straight and easy to locate, and so to put bins everywhere is not the ideal design. But sometimes you come up with ideas and forty-fives and then three-nineties, and they end up working. But what he spoke to earlier about our change at Water Utility when Eric Hines left, Eric was involved in this project heavily, walked away. We had anybody to backfill that position at the time, so we had to throw that work over to Zell at them. Or Zell was Jacobs. Apologize.
Have a motion?
This is all TIA funding as well.
Right. Second.
I'll move.
The next item I have for you is for an easement encroachment at two twenty-seven Callahan Drive. Mr. Oriol, the property owner, wishes to construct a swimming pool that would encroach into our easement, our drainage and utility easement, ten feet. The actual pool itself will not be in the easement. It will be right right outside of the easement, but the apron or the concrete sidewalk around the pool. We do not have any utilities in this easement currently, and they do understand that if we had to get into that easement at their expense.
Move to consent.
I'll move.
The next item is for approval of a proposal from Jefferson Energy for safety lighting at the entrances of Harlem High School. Traffic Engineering received a request to evaluate the need for safety lighting at the three entrances at Harlem High School. They did the analysis, and estimate one, it just has to warrant one of the six criteria. I think it met three of those criteria. Jefferson Energy submitted a proposal to install three lights on new distribution poles, total monthly operating cost of forty-eight dollars and five cents for all three poles, that's total cost per month. Staff is recommending approval.
Second.
Move.
Next item for you is for a maintenance agreement with GDOT for LED stop signs. The stop signs, the edge-lit stop signs that we installed at Columbia Road and Lewisville Road, those were within GDOT right-of-way. GDOT came to us and requested that we basically put together a, or put, apply for a request for traffic signal application. As a part of that application, the subject of maintenance agreement is required, saying that we will maintain those traffic lights, I mean, those stop signs. Staff is recommending execution of the maintenance agreement.
How does that process work? GDOT came to us and said, hey, why don't you apply?
Well, it's a retroactive application. We kind of went in there and put in the stop signs ourselves.
Oh, okay, okay.
Now they're, they're asking us to.
Hand slap.
Go back through and do all the steps.
It's a permission forgiveness thing, right?
Move to consent.
Second.
Next item, Mr. Chair, is for a public hearing on the proposed establishment of streetlight districts for Anderson Farms Phase One, Canton Park Phase One, Crawford Creek South Section Seven, and Seven B, Emerson at Crawford Creek, Indian Springs Section Three, Phase Three, Calory Section Four and Six, River Oaks Phase One A and One B. Staff received petitions for all, from residents, for all these developments, residents or developers, I apologize. Georgia Powers cost proposals and developers contributions are listed in front of you. And as a part of this public hearings, notifications were mailed to property owners and advertised in the Columbia County News Times as required by code. Like to open up the floor for public hearing.
Public hearing is open, about a year? All right, we'll close the public hearing. Item.
Next item is a resolution for the same, to establish streetlight districts in Anderson Farms Phase One, Canton Park, Crawford Creek South Section Seven, Crawford Creek South Phase Seven B, Emerson at Crawford Creek, Indian Springs Section Three, Phase Three, Calory Section Four and Six, and River Oaks Phase One A and One B. And staff received a petition from the residents or developers of the following subdivision for the installation of streetlights, Georgia Powers cost proposals and developers contributions are listed in front of you. At the public hearing, staff recommends approval.
Move to consent. I have to go to debate.
Yeah, Scott.
Move to debate.
It's a fee.
Debate.
Were there any, were any communication, I mean, we mailed through the property owners. Anybody call, ask questions?
Not to my knowledge.
Look, the developer contribution, there's only one that does not have a developer contribution, which means nobody lives there yet. So the developer owns all the lots. He had to pay the taxes up front. So Indian Springs Section Three, Phase Three, the only one that is existing, possible to have people living in it.
Will these be self, or will this cost from the streetlight fund, or?
I'd have to, I'd have to.
Based on. Those, our actual annual, annual cost will not be covered by the sixty-dollar fee per parcel on the tax bill. Well, these lights here will cause a deficit to occur to our streetlight fund. But current policy invented by the commission says that we only charge sixty dollars per parcel, so. Looking for staff to reevaluate that, and we'd be happy to get into it and look at what it needs to be to make sure our our fund stays healthy.
You know, when that sixty-dollar fee was long ago, or?
Been many, many years ago.
Can y'all, can y'all, can just bring us an update on that, maybe next, next time, and give us.
Absolutely. I'll get with Mr. Lee, and we'll we'll put something together for you.
Yeah, so there was a time when when our streetlight funds was way out of whack, and and we were able to get that back in check, and now it's, the the fund is operating as it should with the fees that we're currently charging. But we did have an audit, and we did have a recommendation from the auditor, but we can give you an updated report.
I remember the audit three years ago, maybe. It may be close for for them to do the audit on on that fund, but they said at a certain. do the audit on, on that fund, but they said at a certain time, run it.
Right.
About, and, you know, I just don't wanna get into where it's.
Yeah, we'll take, we'll take a look at it, make sure and get your report so you can see it.
And also, since this is going to a commission debate, then we can run these numbers and get more figures for you prior to that as well.
All right, move to debate. All right, Mr. Driver, single items, staff reports?
First, here's your, year-to-date budget report for the water utility. Looking well there. Next report is our water utility construction project, this is that list that Mr. Johnson mentioned earlier, that four-million-dollar project that you consent will be added to this list and will be updated a monthly for you.
Questions on the report?
Update on, on the, I imagine this UV construction here is about the lights that we've talked about several times, have any more updates from this?
We did get a letter from the state saying they agree to allow the method, to submit the full package of plans for them to review, has the package been submitted at this time?
So we're moving along with that?
hurdle was the method, type of lights were usually, never been done in the state, so we had a hard time getting them to even agree to let us submit the plans, but have agreed to plan.
Let us know if you need any help.
Absolutely.
Pushing that more quickly.
Have any problems?
No other questions?
Executive session items, so I'll make a motion to adjourn. And twenty-one.